I know, what's going on?
Okay, let's move. The media of the Monteserino City Council for April 29th, 2019 will come to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember Luthold.
Present.
And Mayor Turner.
Present.
So, I guess we have no oral communications. So, the first order of business is new business, which this afternoon, we're gonna have the appointment to fill the vacant city council member seat. No speaker cards, so we will skip that. So, let me go over some procedural items before we open the floor to our candidates. First, the staff will present a briefing on the item. Then, each candidate will have up to 25 minutes for questions and answers. At the start of the candidate's time slot, the candidate may be given three, will be given, three minutes for presentation. Then, the council will be given the opportunity to ask predetermined questions, and we will get the applicant's responses. We will have two rounds of questions. We have seven questions, so Councilmember Alahi will ask two, Councilmember Luthold will ask two, Mayor Pro Tem Lawler will ask two, and I will ask one question. So, are there any questions from the council?
Do you guys want to decide who asks? I mean, just so you repeat the same question each time.
No, we already decided.
Oh, you did, perfect. I'm too slow.
Yes, you are. So, let me now explain the voting process. Each council member will receive a ballot with all six names on the sheet. And so, here. We will rank each from number one to number six, number one being the most preferred, and number six being the least preferred. Our ballots will then be collected and tallied by the city manager and the mayor. Our legal counsel will further check and validate the results. The scores for each candidate will be added. If we have a single candidate with the lowest score, that candidate is the winner of the polling. The city council will then vote using Granicus Online to approve that candidate. If the candidate receives three or more votes, the candidate will become the new city council member. However, if the candidate does not receive three votes, the city council will vote on the candidate with the next lowest score. So, having said that, any questions? Very good, so now, let's hear Terry.
I'll just make it super brief. Of course, the, this is, was decided by the council at their meeting, March 19th, to go ahead with the appointment process instead of going to a special election. And so, the staff advertised, and we did receive six qualified applicants, and we, and they are all going to be coming one after the other before you tonight to present themselves and answer questions.
Okay. So, our first candidate is Daniel Labouve. So, Mr. Labouve, you have three minutes to speak, and then, we will each ask you two questions.
Okay. All right.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Daniel Labouve. I live at, on Arlie Drive. I've been a resident of Monteserino for 21 years, and would like to be considered for a candidate for Monteserino City Council. In the past two years, I've become very involved in Monteserino government. I regularly attend the city meetings, and have personally met previous and current city council members and city staff. I've been door-to-door, and have held neighborhood meetings with residents on Rose Avenue to build awareness of a current issue that directly impacts them. I've raised awareness about current issues in social media, and have gained petition support for, from 115 Monteserino residents and surrounding residents for a current issue. I have provided written input and participated in the fiscal '19 Monteserino Gold Setting Meeting. I was recently a sole participant for Monteserino at a Silicon Valley Housing Forum hosted by Livable California and council members from Sunnyvale, Cupertino, Palo Alto, and Pleasanton. I was invited by Councilmember Michael Goldman from Sunnyvale for a follow-up meeting on the same topic and city government in general. I have been actively browsing other city websites for interesting strategies, initiatives, and best practices. In particular, I've brought to the city's council's attention during public comment and through a written summary about Campbell and Palo Alto strategy and planning related to housing. So, why choose me? I've held leadership positions in resource-limited startup companies with a focus on innovation, and in multi-billion-dollar enterprises with a focus on transformation. My results-driven operational background will nicely complement the skills of existing council members. I'm both willing to serve and have time to dig in to complex issues. I know the history, and I'm up to speed on many of the active issues before the city today. I'm familiar with the general plan, design guidelines, and much of the municipal code. I'll be an advocate for expanding the input from residents before important decisions are made. I'll do my best to understand facts, explain my understanding of those facts, and take a data-driven approach to decision-making in the best interests of the community. I believe we learn best from others and work most effectively as a team. I think we should continually monitor and partner with surrounding cities and agencies for best practices and measure our city's performance against that of others. If selected, it'll be my pleasure to serve as a member of the Monteserino City Council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So, now, let me ask Mayor Pro Tem Lawler to ask her two questions.
Okay. Hi, Daniel.
Hi.
As a city council member, what are your top three priorities during your term, and can you outline how you will address them?
I'm really big on preservation of community character, and I think this is fitting with the Monteserino general plan. You know, if we look back at, at the, at the principles of the, of the, you know, outlined in the general plan, it talks a lot about community character, environmental sustainability, enhanced mobility, quality of public services, and community safety. I think these are mainly the, you know, the issues before the city today in some shape or form, right? The idea is, what kind of leadership can we bring to these sorts of initiatives? And, and, and how do we bring that forward? How do we add value? How do we actually progress against some of these, these initiatives? So, I personally, I like to really go after this community character in the context of the housing and a lot of the things that are happening on the state level. I think those are very active areas that we really need to partner with other areas and other, you know, other agencies, and really keep an eye on what other people are doing for best practices, best strategies. I would much rather be proactive in terms of the city's involvement in these sorts of issues and help shape, you know, how these things will come and affect the community rather than sit back and just let it happen to us. I'd rather take a much more proactive approach. You know, I think, you know, as a second initiative, I think this communication transparency, I think the current council has, has taken that as a platform to try to be more open. You know, I can appreciate even in the last council meeting where there was a zoning initiative that came up where we asked the, for some additional input from the community. Hey, what do people really think about this? It's very hard to attract people to this meeting and this forum, you know, unless you really have a strong objective, objection to something. And it's hard to get a sense of what is going on in the community unless you go ask. And so, I think you need to go practically ask before you take big decisions that will affect people down the line. You know, I think lastly, you know, around community safety, I think that, you know, traffic safety, especially Highway Nine, it's the main thoroughfare around here. There's a lot of accidents that happen on Nine. I know my family, in the time that we've been here, my daughter had two accidents there. My wife's been rear-ended once there. It's, you know, it's, it's a problem. You know, the, the rest of Monteserino might be a little bit sleepy in terms of these issues, but, you know, that one in particular, and it's a shared, I understand, it's a shared road, but, you know, perhaps there are things that we can do and partner with others to, to help mitigate. And lastly, you know, around safety also, I mean, how can you avoid all of the current events with wildfire? And so, you know, I know with the CERT program and so forth, you know, we're becoming more prepared, but, you know, there's, can never do enough.
Thank you. One more question. Are you able and willing to commit to attending to the best of your ability all council meetings and assigned committee meetings and board meetings that could be monthly or more?
Absolutely. I'm retired, so I, I have a lot of free time, so if we're not out walking, you know, trails or walking my dog, I, I have a lot of free, free time. So, attending meetings and digging into issues in-depth is fun for me. It's, you know, now, it's my, it would be more of a hobby for me. And so, yeah, that's, that would be not an issue for me.
Thank you. So, let's, let me move on to Councilmember Luthold.
Okay. This is, may or may not be repetitive of what some of your prior answers is, but first question is, what is the top city issue that you think the city council should be tackling?
I definitely think the housing issue in the context of, of the state initiatives that are coming down. I think it's imperative that we really get a handle on this. I was delighted in the last meeting that, that an ad hoc council or ad hoc committee has been formed to, to start digging into this, but I think we're behind, you know? So, even with SB 50 has already progressed through some of the, some of the state legislature without a Monteserino, Monteserino opinion, you know, to, to help guide, right? We're a little late in, in, in helping our state legislatures form an opinion based on what Monteserino thinks.
Okay. And, second, what change specifically would you like to bring about as a Monteserino City Council member?
What change? What specific change?
Yes.
Boy, I sure would like a stoplight out here on Rose Avenue and Highway Nine, but I don't know if that's even possible. I don't know if the funds are there. Yeah, I, I, there's really no specific change. I mean, my, you know, I, being here 21 years, my mindset is really much more around, you know, of course, there's gonna be change, and there's gonna be some growth, and we need to address current events and current issues, but preservation is really, is really my biggest goal, is that rather than do dramatic change, right? Not have big inflection points, it should be gradual change, and, and people should have an ability to adapt to that change and, and have a voice in how that change takes place.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So, now, let me move on to Councilmember Alahi.
Thank you for applying for the.
Good evening. Sure.
Is, you mentioned CERT, I guess you're familiar with CERT? Have you attended the courses?
Mostly in the context of these meetings. It's been mentioned several times, there's been a presentation from, from, I thought it was the Fire Department or the Police Department came in and talked about CERT. Yeah, so, that, that's my familiarity, that's.
Is that something, I don't know if you're familiar enough, it's a Community Emergency Response, T-Sense or something, I guess, response. Is that some?
Emergency Response Team.
T. T, you said it, T. Thank you. Is that something you get involved with, setting up your neighborhood on CERT, getting more people involved?
I think that's something that I, I could do. It's, you know, you know, I had another driving issue in the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm actually able to rally the troops at this point, so I have everyone's email address and know people mostly by first-name basis now, and, and if they don't know me personally, they usually know my dog, and so, so.
The other thing you mentioned was SB 50, and thank you for sending that email you sent last time. It had some very helpful stuff for me and Ruina, we're working on that after many. Do you see any end to that as to how we could get around that? I mean, that's been, hasn't quite passed yet, but it looks like it will probably pass the Senate and then end up with the House. Do you have any suggestions of what kind of strategy you can?
It's a matter of what actually, yeah, it's a matter of what actually comes out of that, right? So, so, yeah, and how restrictive, and how, you know, so right now, it's very expansive, like the rules that they're making, you know, although they talk a lot about being in transit corridors, it's much broader than transit corridors. It's, you know, job-rich environment is defined as almost everywhere, you know, good schools are almost everywhere, and so, so if, if pressure is kept on that bill to bring it to something much more manageable, you know, maybe, maybe it can be a good result. Maybe, you probably maybe even seen also in the local newspaper, so there was really two articles in the last week and a half. You know, one was around, do, do current residents even want, even in Santa Clara County, do they even want this sort of growth as being proposed? And, and although the, the tagline was one in seven, or, or no, seven, seven in 10 don't want it, it was actually more, if you look at the statistics, it was like 15% were advocates of growth, and the rest, and 85% were saying, no, either what we have is fine or less growth. So, growth is really being driven by, by an imbalance of corporate growth versus housing growth, right? And this is, the, the area is, is limited in terms of how much you can actually build, and so therefore, housing prices go up. The, a little bit of the false narrative is really around trying to bring housing prices down. So, my belief is that no matter how much building you allow, it's all market-rate housing, you know, so the, the state's not really targeting below-market-rate housing, and so you're not really solving the problem except for Google, Amazon, Facebook, you know, the guys that are really growing, and that's where 75% of the growth actually came from.
What do you, what do you see as a way of?
To mitigate this? You know, we're gonna have to build some housing around the valley, you know, there's no getting around it because corporate growth has already exceeded by a lot, you know, so there, there is a demand curve there. Can you catch up the supply curve? Not without really ruining this area, you know, so.
So, as SB 50 stands now, it's more like you can build to four units on any lot.
Anywhere.
So, any place in Monteserino, your neighbor, for example, is not building four, but SB 50 passes, he could come back and say, I wanna build four units here.
Even more. No, I think, and, and maybe even, because it's on Highway Nine, maybe even like seven stories, right? Because you might get a transit, you know, so, yeah, it's, it's crazy amount of housing, right? So.
Do you see, do you see a solution or how to?
Well, I think that we, we need to push back. There need to be reasonable constraints around these sorts of initiatives, right? I think the law needs to be written properly, and if it's not written properly, the first one that goes up is gonna be legally challenged. Now, Monteserino doesn't have the resource to challenge, but somebody will, and somewhere, and so it's, it's a matter of delay and, you know, just keep reaching out to our, our representatives and ask for reasonableness. Thank you.
Okay. So, I have one last question, and this one goes into your creative talents. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our city?
I don't think that we do enough outreach, personally. I mean, the social media is, you know, I, I get the Nextdoor-type, type advertisements and so forth, but how many people really open Nextdoor on daily basis? It's only people that have time. If you have a day job, you know, you're not really scanning that, and you're not poking around. The, the, the city website is actually not too bad. I have to give credit to whoever's been sort of maintaining and improving that. I think the database search functions are a little lacking. It's very tough to find things unless you know where to look, or, or even what timeframe things were, have been. But I think other things can be done, you know, so simple things like Survey Monkey, which, which, okay, that, that is a branded way of doing surveys, but I think surveys are valuable, right? So, you know, you, you can't, you can't be involved in any sort of consumer-driven product marketing and not have somebody reach out and ask you, hey, how did I do? So, you know, when the contractors come in, you know, do we give them a survey form? You know, do we do it through a text email, or, you know, so you could do it through text? We, we have a lot of, we've collected a lot of email addresses through this, through, through the city, you know, and, and I'm on that, that email list, but can we expand on that? Can we actually do Survey Monkeys? Can we actually, I notice in Palo Alto, Palo Alto actually contracts with a, an agency to do an annual survey across all of Palo Alto so that it's statistically valid. I, I've never, in 21 years of living here, gotten a, how am I doing from a city perspective? But that's a general practice in Palo Alto, and, and the results seemed, you know, pretty relevant, and they take it pretty seriously, and then they shape their, their, their next year's initiatives around that, that survey. I, I think that there are things that we can do, and, and again, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There's many people that are much better at marketing than, you know, perhaps I would be, but, you know, in our, all we have to do is, is, you know, over a two-day period of time, notice how many times, you know, AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or somebody has asked you in a survey and say, hey, how can I get that to apply to our city business? And, and, you know, so the examples are there, we just have to observe them and then copy them.
Okay. Thank you so much. That ends our interview process with you. You can, you can sit in the audience.
Thank you.
And listen to the next candidate.
Thanks very much for your consideration.
And our next candidate is Michael Frenchadakis.
Hi.
What we're gonna do is, we have, oh, we would like for you to, to speak to us. You have three minutes, and you can talk to the council and tell us why you're here today.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the new street that we have on Blanchard. We all love it. Basically, I'm a longtime resident of Monteserino. I've been here for almost 34 years. I'm very active in civic organizations, including the State Military Reserve, my local church. I've been in civic service now since 1970. I believe that's what all citizens should do. I'm also recently semi-retired this year. I have additional time, and I thought it would be a good time to join, you know, join the city council. I like what the council has done for all of these years. I'm, I'm into keeping the status quo. I'm also afraid of what the state is trying to mandate to our city, and I would do all I can to, you know, see what that entails, and if it's not good for our city, I, I would join the council to fight anything that is jammed at our throats. One of the things that I'm very concerned about is S, it's called SB 50. I'm sure you're all aware of that, but as a Realtor, I kinda know that that's something that's gonna affect a lot of cities and property values and residents. Also, I know that the state is really trying to mandate that to the cities. So, those are the kind of concerns that I have. I'm very civic-oriented, I'm very well-known in this, in the community, and I think I have a pretty good reputation of being fair, honest, and a team player. That's me.
Thank you so much. So, now, we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Lawler ask you two questions.
Okay. Okay, as a city council member, what are your top three priorities during your term, and can you outline how you would address them?
So, my top priorities would, as I said earlier, would probably be to keep the status quo. As a longtime appraiser for 42 years, I'm very familiar with all the communities. I fell in love with Monteserino when I came here, when I first bought a property and wanted to raise a family, because I know this is a very unique community, and so, I'm not into changing it. I think the council through the years, and your council is doing a very good job. So, basically, I would work with the council for the good of the city and its residents.
Thank you. One more question. Are you able and willing to commit to attending to the best of your ability all of the city council meetings and, and assigned commission and board meetings that could be more than once a month?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now, let's move on to Councilmember Luthold.
Hi, Mr. Frenchadakis. So, you've, you've mentioned maintaining the status quo, but in terms of what is the top issue that you think the city council should actively tackle this year? What do you have in mind?
Well, I know that one of the big issues in our, in our city here is the fact that low-income housing keeps to be rearing its ugly head, and I personally like the idea of granny quarters to try to, to squelch that estate requirement, and so, I would look more into that, study it a little bit more, if I was involved in making decisions, quite frankly, and then finding out what the, what the council's stance is on that, because quite frankly, I have not studied the council's view in that regard. I have my own ideas about these things, because I, like I say, I'm an appraiser, and I'm in real estate. That has been my profession. But now that I have a lot more time as a semi-retired person, I can get more into those kinds of issues. So, I think the fact that the state can come in and make these mandates is something that kinda bothers me. I don't, I don't think it's fair, and I've always been a person that's, that looks at the fairness of everything, and I think if the state's coming in and trying to mandate things to people that live in the city, I just don't, I don't like that idea, and so I would really get into those kinds of issues. I'm not aware of any other major issues in the city to be too concerned about, but again, I haven't been involved, you know, at the city level like I probably should've been all these years, but I do read the Los Gaddis Weekly, and I pay attention to what I hear from my neighbors. So, that does concern me.
All right. And what about change? Do you have any changes that you would like to bring about as a Monteserino council member?
Yes. One that I think most of you know about. I would like to see the city of Monteserino have some kind of a dedication to its veterans, because as a Veterans Affairs Commissioner, I know that this city and one other city is the only municipality in all of Santa Clara County that does not have a veterans memorial of any kind, and so I would like to delve a little bit more into that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, now, let me move on to Councilmember Alahi.
Thank you for applying, appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening. One event that's, in my mind, is the CERT program. Are you familiar with the CERT program? Have you, I assume you are, I saw you last time at the CERT meeting also. Tell us how important that is for the six hundred and one.
Well, I think the CERT program is vitally important, and I, I've been involved with CERT since I think it began many, many years ago. In fact, I was one of the first CERT captains with a man named Cal, I believe his last name was Hoagland. He used to live on Poppy, I don't know if he still is there, but it was my regime that helped set up the, the cache, as we call it, or we used to call it, I'm not sure what the new name is, where all those supplies that Dave's having at school are, there's a, there's a shed. And so, I am now getting back into CERT, because I've been very active in my State Military Reserve. I am very concerned about that, I should've said that earlier. The safety of the city is always gonna be a concern of mine. As a State Military Reservist, one of my duties is what they call Emergency State Active Duty Team. I have worked fire duty with the California National Guard. I'm plugged into that system. If we ever did have an issue here, I could make a direct call to the EOC in Sacramento, maybe get some things done, or get it done quicker than maybe going through normal channels would be. So, yes, CERT is very important. I'm looking to fire that up again.
And, physical activity, you mentioned you were involved in a veterans monument, or?
So, yes.
Want to see you to be involved in, have you done that elsewhere?
Yes. I am the founder and president emeritus of the Los Gaddis Veterans Memorial Foundation, of which we were gonna have a dedication on July, I'm sorry, June 15th. I would like to invite the council to that, by the way, and you will get a personal invitation from me, and we will be talking about that at, at another meeting, but... But yes, I am a commissioner for Veterans Affairs, a Santa Clara County Commissioner appointed by Mike Wasserman, who is also a personal friend. And I'm heavily involved in that process. I, I volunteer at the Palo Alto VA and I have since nineteen seventy. And as a Los Gatos Rotarian, I'm an Operation Yellow Ribbon President.
Yes, my final question has to do with SB fifty. You mentioned that. I guess you're somewhat familiar with it. As I understand it, right now, the legislation is headed towards allowing anybody to build almost anywhere in California up to four units on any lot.
No, that's not exactly true. Because we discussed this at real estate meetings. In fact, we discussed it at last Friday's Campbell Real Estate Meeting. And right now, it's proposed to be mandated for multi-units on residential lots, but only within a specific radius of some kind of a mass transit center or bus, major bus depot. And from what we're, what we talked about, or what we understand, it's hitting LA at this point. It's hitting LA hard. But that's just the beginning. It will filter up north. And it could change and morph itself into all kinds of things. And yes, eventually, it could be mandated that anybody would be forced or could put multi-units on their lots. But we're not there yet. That's not what SB fifty, at least my understanding is, that's not where it is at this point.
I, I think that's probably an optimistic understanding. The pessimist one is it's job centers, bus centers, good, good schools. So almost any city will fit into that.
It probably will get to that process. I would agree with you. And that's one of the reasons I like to be able to fight that issue.
That's, that was gonna be my question. How would you fight it? What would you?
Well, I would use, I would work with my fellow council people and, and the attorneys and look at what our legal rights are. And I'll be the first guy to go to Sacramento or wherever we need to go to fight such a process. If that's what the board would wanna do.
Are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so let me ask the final question, if I may.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
How would you, how would you plan to involve the residents of Monteserino in the decision-making process in our city?
In, in, for what item?
For any item.
Oh, for any item?
For example, CERT. How would you involve the residents to be involved in CERT? How would you be involved, the residents, to be involved with zoning?
Well, the best way to do that is knocking on doors. And that's what we've done on our street. We have gone to everybody on our street, on Blanchard where I live, and have, and, and talked to those people. We have their contact information. We have their lots, their houses. We have their phone numbers, their emails. We did that because we have coffees at least once or twice a year at my neighbor's house, Michael DiAddio. I think you know him. He was instrumental in helping our street get redone. And so the way you do that is with the next-door Monteserino. You just have to get out there. I, I like, you know, the Los Gatos Weekly is also very good, because it's local. And just sending out emails and knocking on doors is the best way to get ahold of the, of your fellow citizens. And I wanna do that with CERT. I wanna expand CERT from my street and then expand the perimeter outwards. And I talked to the current, the current CERT director at the meeting the other night. And we're gonna have a meeting to talk about how to do that. So we are gonna expand CERT. Whatever happens to me and, and the council, I am gonna get heavily involved now in CERT.
Okay, so I guess that, that's our questions for you. Thank you. You can, you can sit down and, and listen to the next applicant, the next candidate.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, so our next candidate is Adhiraj Rai.
Hello.
Hello, Adhiraj. Let me just explain to you a little bit about what's gonna happen here. You'll have three minutes to, to do our presentation and to talk about yourself.
Yeah.
Then each one of us will ask you two questions.
Okay.
And you will have twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Sure. Sounds good.
Please go ahead with your three-minute presentation.
Yeah, so my name is Adhiraj Rai. People call me Raj generally. I graduated from SC about a year and a half ago. After that, I picked up a job doing executive recruiting. But I didn't really like it, because I guess I had experience doing a lot of like networking in college. I spent about three years doing kind of, working full-time on networking in this area, actually, in Northern California. My boss had a couple internet companies and he kind of developed a passion for putting people together and kind of organizing events and hosting conferences with just interesting people. So spent a lot of time doing that. And I guess it kind of changed, kind of just opened up my mind a little bit and kind of showed me, I guess, what my taste was and what my interests were, when I didn't really know that in college. So that's kind of what I like to do now. I do more kind of freelancing work, kind of do online marketing. And then, at the same time, I'm still in the networking space. So I have a lot of fun doing that. And yeah, I think I can apply those talents here. I mentioned in, in the application I submitted that, I mean, just the way Monteserino is, the fact that there aren't that many gathering places, it's hard for kind of the, it is, in my opinion, more of a neighborhood. It's kind of hard for people to, to get to know each other, especially because we have Highway Nine dividing us, for example. So I thought that there might be some solutions there. And any kind of problems that people have that they wanna sort out, I think they could just do that, almost mostly cooperating. They might not even need the city council's help for that. So I have some ideas for that as well. Any questions you have, I'm happy to kind of elaborate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so let me ask Mayor Pro Tem Lawler to, to ask you two questions.
Hi.
Hi.
So you've been here ten months?
Yeah.
Great. And what have you seen in, in the ten months that you've been here that stick out to you as important issues?
Bought the house in twenty seventeen. And then that was kind of around the summertime that we were looking here. And I saw like, I know a lot of people were complaining about Santa Cruz traffic. And it seems to have like sorted itself out. I'm not sure. I mean, it was getting hot this last week and I didn't see it. I wasn't having too much of a problem. I actually live right off Ridgecrest. So I guess like, you know, I, I would have seen it if there were something going on. And that seemed okay. But I also noticed like, I mean, this place has a really good reputation for general safety and stuff. But I've heard that, I mean, as Los Gatos becomes like, you know, really a destination for a lot of people, whether or not like safety is adversely affected, certainly like maybe if, like a feeling of privacy that you might expect in a place like this, it can change. So I know that, I, I know some people whose houses have been like burglarized or whatever. And I know that wasn't really an issue until, until more recently. So I'm sure that there are things that people here can do. Everybody here is very, like fortunately talented and also have means. So definitely solutions that can be worked out, especially if people can work together. And I mean, I guess I also noticed that there's kind of a lack of like community kind of events. And I'm not sure, I mean, if people, if that's not what's kind of desired, that's fine. But if it is, then I'm sure that there are ways to kind of make people, make it easier for people to do that themselves.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it's important to get, get new perspective.
Get together.
Yeah, yeah, and to get together. I, are you able and willing to commit to attending to meetings twice a month as well as assigned commission assignments?
Yeah.
That would be once or twice a month as well? You have the time? Good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So now let me move on to Councilmember Luthold.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Is, you look at the city. What is the top city issue that you think the city council needs to be addressing at this time?
I mean, I live on kind of a secluded street, but if safety were an issue, I mean, it's a small place. So I feel like that would be, that should be the top priority if it's not already, if that's not already a requirement that's being fulfilled. Like, if, don't know if you've been to like Beverly Hills recently, like, but the Benedict Canyon neighborhood there, they have like ADT cars kind of like patrolling their area. And because it's a small neighborhood, probably not much smaller than ours. So, I mean, I guess they get like a group rate on ADT home security. And like, because so many of them are doing it, they send out like patrol cars to like patrol their neighborhood. Because LA is like pretty crazy, even in nicer areas. So, I mean, that's just like one solution, you know? That's just an option. But it just requires some community cooperation.
And then, do you have any specific changes that you would like to bring about in Monteserino as a city council member?
I mean, because we have the, like the advantage of being able to like reach out to people directly with some credibility, like they'll read our emails, we, we could do is like create, just for them, like online spaces to get like, people like, especially families, like every family has like one person who's probably like heavily into like Facebook or something like that. We could just create like official Monteserino groups, like even for like different like subsections of the neighborhoods. You know, like the Greenwood, Ridgecrest like side and, you know, like Dave's or whatever, like you can just subdivide them. So people can actually like talk about pertinent issues with the people that those issues are like relevant to. And then if you need, like, there could be communication across groups. Like, I, I feel like that's one way we could use, like, what's available to us. I'm not sure what the city council can, can like do, like how much, how much power you have. But like maybe working with the police department or something, if there has, if there's any question about safety or if there's like, people are having a problem with traffic when things are happening, like people are going to Santa Cruz. I mean, yeah, I'm actually unfamiliar with exactly how much, how much the city council can actually do. Yeah, if you could tell me, actually, that'd be interesting.
All right. Something to attend to meetings and, and continue to learn and figure out as we go forward. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so now let me call on Councilmember Alahi.
Hello, General Mascar. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Applying to the city, I think it's really good that you're doing it at this stage. You just moved in. I'm just trying to figure out if you're familiar with any, you know, what, there's a wildfire issue, obviously, that we're all concerned about. Are you familiar with CERT and Neighborhood Watch at all? Have you heard about it?
I'm familiar with Neighborhood Watch, yeah. I don't know about CERT that much.
Good program. And what do you think about Neighborhood Watch? Is that something you'd get involved with or talk to?
Yeah, I like that. I mean, if there's an issue, then yeah, I definitely think that like something should be, should be done. Like, people should feel safe, you know, especially like, you know, like husbands and like wives are traveling and like kids are home alone with like a single parent. It's nice to like at least have a, a feeling of safety. Like, I'm sure it's a pretty safe neighborhood relatively speaking, but it's always better to improve that.
But that's something that you want to want to?
I mean, that's like one of the things I like to like, I think would be important, yeah.
Nice to look at that. Let's listen, I guess one of the issues we are facing now is push from the state legislature to build more housing in Monteserino.
Oh, yeah, there, right.
SB two fifty, SB fifty for a bill that's out there that we're all concerned about. Have you heard about it or?
Yeah, it's right, where the Jack Rose was, right? Is that, someone told me that there was like, I'm sure you all know, there, was the lawsuit that was like being, being placed. Was that successful at all? Like, I, I know someone wanted to slow that development down or try to like kind of squash that whole endeavor.
Yeah, that was a major issue that we faced over the last three years. That one is resolved itself.
It was going through.
So, yeah, that one, that one is a different issue. Yeah, it's a done issue.
Yeah.
Now we're dealing with is a new legislation which may require almost every city
Yeah.
to build, allow building of three or four, multiple houses on any lot anywhere. That's the most extreme analysis of it.
Any lot?
Any lot.
Like a private, my lot?
Almost, almost any lot, almost anywhere. And
I think that's terrible.
That's where, you know, it hasn't passed yet, but that's, that's what we're considering. That's, that's kind of putting in my lead as being terrible.
I didn't even like the Jack Rose thing, in fact.
Perhaps it's from you guys to tell us, you know, how do you solve that problem?
You solve that problem? I mean?
You can move.
I mean, I don't know how effective civil suits are, but, I mean, certainly like that's something, like do whatever you can like stop that from happening. I'm sure, but I'm, I'm sure we have a lot of lawyers around here who could kind of give us advice on, on what to do. Maybe one of you's in the legal profession. Yeah, fantastic.
We are out of advice. There's three of us, but of course not.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't want that, you know? I don't even, it's not the crowd. I mean, like, I think there are like eighty people like coming into the neighborhood if that, that whole thing gets built, which is fine. But kind of lowers the housing prices and I guess it changes the, changes the complexion, which is.
The rush is gonna be whether you build four on your lot before your neighbor does.
Yeah, right, right, right. Oh, that, in that sense, yeah. I do think that could ever happen, like reasonably speaking.
Unless somebody really, unless we really push hard, I guess.
Wow.
It's an extreme thing going on.
So it's like a genuine possibility that they'll force people to build houses on their lots?
So you, you've been here only ten months. What made you decide to run for city council?
My mom kind of inspired me to run for city council. She was like, you, because I was telling her like what we should do about like, you know, Jack Rose. It's like, you never know, there could be like a Native American, like, you know, something could be buried there. Like, should at least have someone come and look to see like, you know, what, what can be done? You know, if there's something that needs to be conserved, like wildlife stuff. All you have to do is say it. You know, all you have to do is like file some kind of anything and, and you, you jam up like a lot of processes. So she was like, yeah, I want to run for city council. So, I mean, that, I guess I wasn't being that serious about. But then I thought about it and I like my neighborhood. I like it here. I moved from Willow Glen. And I kind of like, it's like, it's a peaceful place. Just like, it's like, get a lovely view of the mountains and everything. So I'm kind of finding it like to be my home already in a big way. So I'm happy about that.
Thank you for applying. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So you know Raj, I really like millennials who listen to their moms.
Yeah, that's right.
So let me ask you a question, though.
Yeah, please.
How would you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process in our city?
Yeah, I mean, if you could give me a, like an example of like a type of decision, then I could, I could give you like, and I, you know, something more specific.
So, so let's say we have a meeting like tonight.
Right.
How would you get our citizens to come in and attend our events?
For example, if we talked about like Highway Nine, like Highway Nine traffic for Santa Cruz, I bet you like a lot of people would come and like, and kind of attend and try to give their input. You know, it's just like, I'm sure at every meeting you discuss something that like everybody cares about, or at least a lot of people care about. So you can just like put that out there, you know, like have like interesting discussions.
How would you put it out there?
You just email them. I'm good at that. Like, so I used to do like a lot of cold emailing to like people who really didn't have a lot of time on their hands, you know, like people who are like pretty high-powered, like Silicon Valley people. But if you get them, like, all, all we have to do is get them together for like an interesting conversation. Like, for example, our general formula was to have like one, like really famous person, right? Like, our main go-to guy was like Nolan Bushnell. He founded Atari. And we'd say, he's gonna be there. And he used to just like talk about whatever, but people would show up to talk with him. And then like as the next like best person showed up, we'd like say, in the, in the next invite we sent, we'd say like, these two people are talking and they're gonna have a conversation about, you know, like futurism. Or, you know, something like that. And then I just kind of learned to kind of market kind of conversations and events. So I could probably do that.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here and thank you for thinking about being a council member.
Yeah.
So if you can take your seat, we'll call the next person and our next candidate.
Can you take a minute and sit right to the back?
Yes. Okay, so our next candidate is Chandra Khan.
Thank you, divina.
Believe me, they'll always make you go. Shall we address you as Professor Khan?
No, I'm okay with, uh, Chandra, that's very kind of you.
Okay, so, what we're going to ask you, you have twenty-five minutes, you can have three minutes to, to talk about, uh, yourself and, and then we will ask you each two questions.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone, and good evening, council members and everyone here. Thank you for having me. My name is, uh, Chandra Khan, uh, I'm a professor, educator, researcher, scientist, and a mom. Uh, I'm a resident of Montesereno since, uh, twenty fifteen. Um, I enjoy this area, I'm a, I'm employed by State of California, I'm a professor in Cal State system, so I believe in service, giving back, I served the State of California at the same time I serve at the federal level when called upon to review grant proposals and so on. I recently realized by working closely with the city, my faculty and the campus are doing all sorts of fun programs, so that, when I saw this ad, it attracted me to this position because working at city level, we can run some integrative programs that will benefit the citizens that uses science, that uses, uh, expertise that we have available. That is why I'm attracted to this position and I want to serve, and I'm service-minded, I've been always serving, and I look for opportunities to serve, and here, when I looked at your agenda, you had healthy residents of Montesereno program and so on as your goal. I studied human aging in model systems, so I am very interested in public health issues. I've consulted for CDC at some point, reviewing grant proposals, I've consulted for National Science Foundation, USDA, and so on, so I look forward to bringing, uh, whatever you are planning to do in the city council level to benefit Montesereno residents by bringing in my science background as well, by running some public health walk in Montesereno residents' program and so on, that way we can build better relationship with the residents of Montesereno, as well as we can enjoy the greenery that is around us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, so, we will have Mayor Pro-Tam Lawler, and she's going to ask you the first two questions.
Hi, thank you for being here. Um, as a council member, and you've been here for four years, what do you see as the top three issues, priorities that you'd like to address?
Number one, I see traffic. I lived two minutes away from here and I was afraid of Highway nine. I am from Los Angeles, that says a lot, so, uh, traffic and urbanization is becoming a big issue everywhere, and I see that with all the zoning issues and new buildings coming up on Highway nine, I wonder how long it'll take for me to drive my daughter to Saratoga Elementary School in the morning, uh, so I think traffic due to new developments and third, third one being natural disasters and so on, we need to be aware of because it is green, so we have to worry about drought and fire danger and so on.
Great, okay, thank you, and then, will you be able to have the time to commit to attending two council meetings a month?
Yes, of course, I looked at your schedule and, uh, I am working in Los Angeles, in the city of Carson, however, my job involves educating the faculty, faculty are my students. I run programs and trainings for the faculty and I work with the faculty to write grants to bring in federal money, state money, and local money to strengthen programs on our campus so that we can prepare tomorrow's workforce better. Having said that, my work is from home, I use a lot of technology to communicate and work with faculty, I'm writing various grants at any given time, the flavor changes every month, one month it will be arts competing for California Arts Council money, another month it will be STEM, another month it will be something else. Uh, so, ten-plus hours is reasonable for me because if I'm not working for the city, if, I will be contributing that elsewhere by serving at our local schools here as an educator.
Okay, great, and there's also, you'll be assigned some commission positions as well, and those might be during the day or they might be during the evening if those would work for you.
My job is flexible, uh, by nighttime, if I finish my job, that is fine, I am accountable for State of California to give in my forty-plus hours every week, so I am mindful of, mindful of that, but my job is so flexible, as long as I get my work done, uh, I shouldn't have any trouble, and I'm extremely organized because I've been doing this remotely for three and a half years, working for this campus that is under-resourced minority-serving and Hispanic-serving institution in Carson that is next to Compton, California, so I'm pretty well balanced, uh, with my time, so I do not see committing ten-plus hours an issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, council member Luther.
Yeah, um, good evening, thanks for coming.
Good evening.
What is the top issue that you think the city council should be tackling here in Montesereno?
I would say currently you have a lot already on your list that's appropriate, at the same time, I'm also concerned about SB fifty, uh, I see that that's on your agenda and I'm watching closely as well because that is going to impact all of California with regards to buildings and how many more high-density building, at the same time, we have to be aware of affordable housing, so I see that in general, high-density development or affordable housing, that is the issue, main issue to worry about going forward, that will be the number one I'll pick right now.
Great, and what particular changes would you like to bring about as a Montesereno city council member?
It's, it's perfect, you know, the city is amazing, I, I, I write, I live here, but I write about LA County all day long and South Bay and Los Angeles area, so I feel like the city is perfect compared to everything else I write about, uh, but I do want to say that one thing I would do is probably start engaging the residents a bit more besides the picnic, annual picnic, I know that is done, how can we work with the residents a bit more? I would like to run, I've done programs like this at campus level, doing office hours or open hour, one hour in the morning at a park or meet here and go for a walk, how can we lead such, uh, programs that will engage the community, that way we all feel like we are part of the community, we could go for a walk or one day we could take a, a lesson about how to recycle or how to conserve water, for example, a quick, uh, half an hour, touch-based kind of program, and I would be very interested in running public health type of, you know, walk and talk, I used to do coffee talk, I do open hour or coffee hour, people come in and, you know, I'll be there if people show up, that's great, if they don't, I do my work, um, so I look forward to doing some new initiatives that plugs in and integrates your goals as well, what you're trying to achieve.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, council member Ilahi.
Thank you, Dr. Khan, for coming and applying.
Thank you.
Here four years and you felt that need to apply to the city council?
Yeah, there was a switch, I need to add, I work with faculty a lot, recently I've been working with artists in my campus who are professors, and, uh, they started working with City of Carson and went in and put this program called Arts in the Park, these are underserved communities, so the kids come out of school and go to park and my faculty, with funding from City of Carson, would go in and run these activities using our students. So, at that point, switch went on for me and I was looking at the website here to see, what can I do, how, I'm here, one hour a month, two hours a month, it's not going to cost me anything, how can I engage with this community that is giving back so much and has so much to offer? That was the switch, so sorry to interrupt, that is the reason I was looking and when I saw this call, I said I should at least apply, um, be, I know there are a lot of qualified residents that can take this position, but I'm here out of passion, wanting to serve, and wanting to serve locally.
Thank you for doing that, and I also understand you're familiar with SB fifty when you were responding.
Somewhat.
How do you, how do, you know, what do you understand about SB fifty?
What I understand is depending, uh, affordable housing is a problem everywhere and, uh, they, there is a thought, talk about allowing high-density housing, some fourplex, for example, um, so the state is right now looking at it and if it passes, then we have to follow, perhaps, whatever state mandates, meaning instead of single-family housing, a developer can come and offer me ten million and I can say, "Here you go, have my house, uh, give me the money," um, and you can build following whatever state regulates or mandates. That has cascading effect, yes, it does alleviate housing conj, uh, housing issues, perhaps, but at the same time, we are cutting down trees, that has other, uh, impact, so, uh, right now, I know barely, um, I don't know too much, I don't want to read too much till it goes through the process, and if it gets approved, that's when, uh, I will pay more close attention to understanding the exact regulation because from what I understand, near transit, near where the jobs are, there may be permit for building fourplexes, for example, or high-rise complexes.
Worst analysis that we've gotten on that is that, and, and almost in any city, almost on any lot, you can build four-unit housing, so either you beat your neighbor to sell your property and build a four-unit lot or your neighbors next to you build four-year lots. How do you feel about that? Is that something you'd support or is that something you'd oppose? And if you'd oppose it, do you have any suggestions on how to oppose it?
I am not super well-informed on this topic, except that I know this is coming. My, as a resident, as a resident.
Assuming what I'm telling you is going to happen, how do you feel about that?
As a resident, I would be nervous, uh, high-value unit, our housing is high-value and high-investment, uh, for a lot of folks, so as a resident, I will be very nervous. Uh, if I were to sit in one of the chairs there, I have to look at the data, look at all the research that is out there and make a call that will benefit or not harm the residents of Montesereno.
We live in a wildfire emergency kind of a site, this, Montesereno is supposed to be in one of those high, high, high wildfire districts, there, there's a CERT program, there's a Neighborhood Watch program, are you familiar with any of those?
Mm-hmm.
Is that something you'd participate in to become yourselves a CERT-qualified person?
I would be happy to, I, I haven't committed the time to do it, I like to do every training possible, uh, because any amount of training will never prepare you for that day if that were to happen, so I like to be trained on everything, I just got CPR certified for Girl Scout, I was happy for that, uh, but I'm looking to get trained in every area so that we are well-informed and we have more qualified folks ready in case something unfortunate were to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let me ask you the last question, Chandra, and I think you may have answered this already, you talked about engaging the community, you talked about having coffee hour, but, uh, how else would you involve the residents in decision-making processes that pertain to our city?
I saw your, uh, Nextdoor call go out with all the resume and, uh, application today, so you are keeping residents aware of what's going on, Nextdoor is one option that you continue to engage or inform the community, we always found out that offering coffee and pizza or cookies helped with the turnout on campus, I don't know if you have tried offering cookies, it's, it's just engaging everybody is a challenge, I understand people are busy, people have work, people have other commitments, what can we do before or after city council meeting is what I will look at, is there a catch, you know, bring a friend you have, I know with government funding, you cannot use the money to give raffle, maybe the vendors locally can give us ten-dollar gift card to La Scada's Cafe or Starbucks gift card, that way those that walk in, you do a lottery system and somebody gets a card, so we've tried all sorts of, I run a lot of programs, day in and day out, that's what I do, engaging the entire stakeholder is a big challenge for me, um, so I would think about some other innovative ways to bring them into the meetings and find ways to engage them otherwise away from the council meetings as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me and thank you for the opportunity. And by the way, Terry and Andrea, you heard that, right? Cookies before and after the meeting.
Yeah, really, I like that idea.
Okay, so, our next candidate is Shalini, Sha, Sha, Shalini Saxina.
Hello.
Hello, Shalini, uh, what we would like you to do is to give us a three-minute presentation about yourself, and then we will each ask you two questions.
Mm-hmm. I don't think I have anything to say for three minutes, but I'll wrap it up quickly. So, my name is Shalini, I live in Rose Avenue, just four houses down, I am from India, I grew up in a small town in northern India, we moved here in two thousand two, my husband and I, we lived in southern California for two and a half years, we moved to Bay area in two thousand five, end of two thousand five, lived in Sunnyvale, then bought our first home in North San Jose before moving here in twenty thirteen, and since then, we've been living here, I have a fifteen-year-old sophomore, she is a youth commissioner here, so maybe you have seen her around, and, uh, seven-year-old golden retriever, I think I'm more recognizable with him because I'm walking him all the time, and I've studied law and management and worked briefly in both fields before moving here, when I moved here, we were on Edge Four, I was in Edge Four, which doesn't allow to work, so I decided to stay home with my daughter while she was growing up, and once I decided to stay home, it was hard to go back to work because daughter was growing up, so I decided to be more involved in community as a volunteer and as a non-paid worker, so I've worked with very many, um, nonprofits as a volunteer over the years and been involved with my daughter's school as a volunteer, um, along with class and grade representatives and volunteer work, I've worked to build their community outreach program and ran it for a year and have been a, uh, Girl Scout troop leader for multiple years, uh, for my daughter's troop, now she's all independent sophomore, ready to go to college, so this is the time for me to expand and be more useful for my community and neighborhood, so I just decided to throw my hat in the ring and see where it goes.
Okay, thank you so much, so now we'll have, um, Mayor Pro-Tam Lawler ask you two questions, the first two questions.
Sure.
Well, thank you for being here. First of all, as a council member, what do you see as the top three issues facing our city right now and how would you deal with them?
So, I have read meeting notes and, uh, city agenda and everything, and it looks like, sit, more focus of the city is community involvement, getting more transparency and efficiency in community, uh, in council meetings and, uh, getting more community involvement, so I have few ideas around those, starting small, maybe get more kids involved, maybe get more families involved, and when we have more people coming in, we'll have more communication and that will make things more effective and more transparent, and then I see some other issues like beach traffic, which people always keep complaining about, but I, but we don't know how to address it, and being a small city, com- how to address it. And being a small city, Montesereno doesn't get that much say, I believe, in comparison to Los Gatos. So those kind of things, I think we can be more effective if we have more community involvement in that.
Great. Thank you. Are you able and willing to commit the time to attending all of, all council meetings that are twice a month as well as appointed commission positions that could be once or even twice a month during the day or meeting?
Yeah, definitely. Since I am right now not employed and not planning to be employed because I don't think I can work for anyone else anymore. So yes, definitely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So our next two questions are gonna come from Councilmember Luthold.
Hi, good evening. So you may have touched on this already, but what is the top priority issue that you think the city council should address at this point?
I would say community involvement because we have our small neighborhoods. We talk, but we, not everybody knows what's going around unless we come to the meetings or we make an effort to go online and read. And not everybody's interested in it. We just keep coming up with our individual complaints and maybe worries what is happening to our city. But we do not have that strong force to come here and discuss it. So I think, I would say that that is the topmost priorities and especially being such a small community, I think we can do a better job of that.
And do you have ideas for how we would reach out more and involve people from the community more when they, before they have problems?
Yeah, I've been, definitely, we can set up, I mean, I know city is working on making the website more efficient and we are recording meetings now, but those recordings are very slow. And I was trying to go through it, it will run for 30 seconds and then it will stop and then you have to wait and have a snack and then wait and come back again. So I, I don't think anybody would be very motivated to go through that and learn what is going on unless they actually have a complaint going on. So we can improve upon that and we can definitely use more social media platforms, I think, and just have small, like, at the city, birthday of the city, we have this ice cream social. Maybe we can have little more smaller events like that where we can call more community members and build a stronger network.
Okay, great. And do you have any particular changes that you would like to bring about as a Montesereno council member?
No, I do not know much about how the council works. So I am not qualified to say that I want to make this change until I learn more.
Well, I'm thinking about changes in the city or to the city from what you've seen as a resident here and what you've been involved in.
No, I wouldn't say. I, I love the city. I love how it is. So I don't think I would want to make any drastic changes here. Just little issues which we can address or maybe get organized to address.
Thank you.
Okay. So Councilmember Alahi?
Thank you, Shalini, for applying. That was very nice to see the applications that have come in. I know you love the city of Montesereno and what's going on, but there's a big bad wolf out there that's brewing on Montesereno right now in the form of SB 250.
Right.
Our, our worst interpretation is that it allow anybody to build fourplexes on any lot, anywhere.
Right.
In almost any city. So how do you feel about having a fourplex next to you? Is that something you'd support? Or do you have any suggestions on how you'd oppose such a bill? It hasn't passed yet, but it's gonna pass unless people really get mobilized.
Right. So I just recently, I think a couple of days ago, there was a newspaper article where they have made some changes and they said that under, if the city, any city has population under 50,000, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't, they will get some exemptions from those kind of rules. So it was in Mercury News. You can look it up. So that, we can techni, we use that technicality to definitely oppose those multiplexes. I wouldn't want because we already have so much traffic problem and we share schools with Los Gatos. We don't have our own schools and things like that. If we allow those high-rise buildings or multiplexes to build here, there would be another set of problems or another set of things which we have to consider before we allow that. So definitely, I would not be in favor of those laws and we can use those technicalities they are discussing right now in Sacramento or making the changes to maybe apply to our own city.
Also, we live in a wildfire environment in the city. So it's a wildfire zone, in one of the wildfire zones. There are a couple of programs that are in the works with CERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team and Next, Neighborhood Watch Programs. Are you familiar with any of those? Have you participated in any of those? Are you thinking about?
I am little fam, familiar with those, but I haven't participated in any, any of this. I mean, right now, we just do our own part, trim our trees and remind our neighbors to trim their trees and things like that. But yes, I haven't actively participated in any of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me ask you the last question. You, you talked about making our website more efficient. You talked about social media platforms, community events. Are there any other things you can think of in terms of involving the residents in a decision-making process in our city? What other things can you think about?
Decision-making will only come with the involvement. And as more we get people involved, as much we have this room filled with people, then only they will know what's going on and what the issues are. So we can start small. We can have more active programs, like my daughter's school has this program where at the end of the school year, they display all the artwork students have made. And of course, everybody wants to see their own kid's artwork, but families come and enjoy that. Maybe we can start something like that, similar in our city. And we have kids of all ages and I'm pretty sure we have wonderful artists. We can present it. And that would be a good way to bring people in the door, get the conversation started. And when we have more people, we can always remind them, hey, this is going on. Come join the meeting. And when we have more people, then we will have more participation, decision-making.
Well, I like that idea. Thank you. So I guess, thank you for, for being here today.
Thank you so much.
You can, you can join us and I will call on the next candidate.
Definitely.
Terry, will you call or?
I need to text her to let her know we're running ahead of schedule, so she should be.
Here.
She's appearing at the phone. We had a schedule. We're doing well on this whole efficiency of meeting things. And we, we crossed it off the list about efficiency of meetings and then it happened.
Yeah, this is, we've done it a hundred times. Give them a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Catherine, this is Terry Blunt, city manager. And thank you for being, thank you for being available a bit early.
Oh, no problem. I appreciate the courtesy of being afforded the opportunity to interview you on the phone.
Perfect. So I'm gonna introduce you to the mayor, Mayor Turner, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about the process, okay?
Okay.
Hi, Kathy.
How are you doing?
So let me, let me just give you the process that we're gonna go through today. What we want you to do is to talk about yourself for the first three minutes. And then we have prepared seven questions. Each council member will ask you two questions apiece. And then you are our last candidate. So after you're done, then we will go ahead and take a vote.
Okay.
Okay. So you can go ahead and start now, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, responding to, I thank all the council members for going through this process. I think the letter qualifications that I submitted really sum up why qualifications, why I feel I would be a good candidate. I'm a graduate of Santa Clara University. I both, I have both a business degree and a law degree. I've worked for various companies during my lifetime, large companies such as Sheila Packer, Law Firm. I also, my family owned a family business for over 50 years here in Santa Clara County. We've always been involved in local communities and politics. I was raised to believe that we need to get back to the community that gives so much to us. I've been a business owner, an attorney. I have a long history of community service, which was detailed in my qualifications. Some of the community service that I really, really provided me with a wealth of knowledge that I think would serve greatly for this board, were particularly the Health Trust of Santa Clara County, where I learned a lot about the health needs facing our county. I also served on the finance committee for the Women United Country Club and on some homeowners' associations where I learned a lot about budgeting and finance for different organizations. I also have served on the wholesale beer distributor industry trust and another trust that was a self-insured trust for workers' compensation insurance. So both, both of these trusts taught me a lot about insurance and the government processes that a lot of our communities are facing. While I've been a 30-year resident of Montesereno, I'm only 56-years-old. But I grew up in Saratoga and having lived most of my life in this community, I know the issues that we're facing, as well as the various opinions of the older, younger, more affluent, maybe not so affluent, members of our community and how to be unbiased. And my service on the various boards, I've learned about following mission statements and values and how to bring boards to work together cohesively. Not every board I've worked on, how the members got along. And I think it's very important that board members respect everybody's opinions, values, background. So one thing, I know you have a lot of various qualified applicants and you have a very difficult job. And I would just like to say that I think that in making your final decision, you need to make sure that you have a well-rounded board that represents various, various aspects of our community so that every voice is heard. And I do think it's very sad that we don't have our dairy farm anymore. So I guess that sums up my statement.
Well, thank you so much, Kathy. So now we're gonna have Mayor Protem Lawler ask you the first two questions.
Hi, Kathy.
Okay. Hi.
As a city council member, what do you see as being your top three priorities and how would you address them?
My top, did you say three priorities? I'm sorry, I, did you say top three priorities?
Oh, yes, top, top three. Yes, yes, top three.
Okay. Well, obviously, we have the issue of the affordable housing that our community has to face. So we really, it's my understanding that we're a little late in the game on that. And we really need to identify where we might be able, how and where we can comply with that. Because if we don't, the state's gonna mandate for us. So we definitely need to address that. I think we also need to address our traffic and street problem, our, our roads are aging. We have so many businesses coming into downtown, San Jose and other areas, the north 40, that's gonna bring a lot of people into our area. And our streets are already clogged. They're debilitated. So I would like to figure out ways to address that. I think with some of our community neighborhoods, putting in some roundabouts or some other air, things that I've seen, whether it's bumps in the roads or something which, you know, I, I haven't researched at all. But I do think there are ways to mitigate the speed on our side streets. So I would like to address some of that. Currently, there's a lot of areas in our community that are suffering from a lack of internet service that other areas in our community have. Some of our residents really are still in the dial, dial-up age. And if I can just sort of, side note, is we also have some aging population that we have a lot of seniors aging in home. And we need to figure out how to reach out to them and make sure that they're safe.
Okay, great. Thank you. And one last question. Are you able and willing to commit to attending council meetings twice a month and various board commission assignments?
Oh, definitely. You know, I guess I've served on many boards and I'm, I don't wanna sound type A, but I have a tendency when I get involved in something, if I commit myself, I jump in with those feet. And I am, I'm always very eager to get involved, even if it's an area that I'm not educated in. And I educate myself to make sure that I can do the best job I can.
Great. Thank you very much.
So Kathy, I have Councilmember Luthold sitting to my left and he's gonna ask you two questions.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy. Thanks for being here. I know you've addressed some of these issues already, but what do you think is the top priority issue that the city council should be tackling at this time?
Well, from what I understand, that the top priority really is the affordable housing issue. Where we can maintain the beauty of our town and still comply with the state laws so that they don't just come in and take over and start mandating for us. And like I said before, roads, I mean, those are two huge issues for us. But we really do not want to lose control of our decisions in housing for our community. It could destroy the community that we all know.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, do you have any specific changes that you would like to bring about as a city council member if you're, if you make your way to the council?
I think we advocate council right now. And I think that, I've been very impressed with the outreach that the council has been doing in, in terms of communication, especially that with the weekly stuff we get on, the Nextdoor Neighbor and all that. But it is, we really do need to have more people involved in our community, at least reading what we put out and getting them to provide input. Communication is just, I mean, it's, it's a debate in this area. It's difficult. People are overtaxed, overwhelmed by the information that we, they receive. And especially with our older population, trying to keep them engaged. And I, and our youth continuing to gate, engage them and keep them involved. So I do see communication is just an ongoing effort that we need to make, continue to make effort at.
Great. Do you have any ideas in terms of what might be effective for outreach to these older populations in the community here?
With the older population, believe it or not, it might just be good old-fashioned knocking on doors. knocking on doors and maybe reaching out to some of their children, maybe starting a program of letting their children know that maybe we, I know we used to have those community officers that would just sort of patrol areas, but maybe it's doing door-to-door checks, just saying hello, having, even our youth volunteer to check in on different people, providing them with leaflets. They're not all on social media.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so Kathy, we're gonna ask Councilmember Eli to ask you two questions.
Okay.
Good evening Kathy, thank you so much for applying, appreciate it. You've been living here for a long time, so it's good to see an application. Is, a couple of questions I have is, are you familiar with the CERT and the Neighborhood Watch Program?
Uh, yes, actually, I'm having a difficult time hearing you.
Are you familiar with the CERT and the Neighborhood Watch Program?
I am familiar with the Neighborhood Watch Program. My neighborhood has, well, we have the Neighborhood Watch Program, but we haven't been actively engaged with it for quite a few years. We started it some twenty years ago and we used to have meetings and it kind of sort of developed.
Okay, and then you also emphasized the, maybe I should, can you hear me Kathy at all or no?
I can hear you, but you sound a little bit distant.
So, you wanna come?
Yeah, I'll just come on over here.
I would just add that I'm fortunate that I live in a neighborhood that only has eight houses, and our neighborhood has not had a lot of turnover and we're very close knit. We, while we don't have what Neighborhood Watch meetings, we do all watch out for each other and we frequently communicate.
Yeah, I mean, that's the great thing about Montecristo, you know, there's always, there's not much turnover, once you move to Montecristo, you tend to stay here, and that's a good thing about it.
It's really hard to leave.
That's correct. The other question you said about low-income housing and all that, and you, your thought was that maybe we're a little bit behind on that. SB fifty, that's now in the Senate, is a bill that seems to be pretty atrocious, allowing anybody to build almost four units on almost any lot. Do you have any suggestions on what could, we could still do to oppose that?
Um, well, to oppose it, we just, we need to get involved in process with Governor Gavin Newsom, and we need to lobby our own city and get together with other cities, join forces, uh, to do the best we can to lobby against it or to at least amend, amend it, um, because, you know, it has to be city by city and street by street, and there's areas where it can work and not work. We have such a unique community, so I think we really need to lobby, to carve out some exceptions for unique communities like ours.
Thank you.
I mean, I would personally go and meet with them. I have a relationship with them and I, we have no problem personally sitting down with them and discussing with him, not my personal views, but the views of the city, because that's what I would be representing.
Excellent, thank you.
Are you talking about Gavin Newsom, Kathy?
Yeah.
Is that what you just said? Okay, okay, thank you. So, let me ask you the last question. You talked about communications with, communicating with residents, keeping them involved, knocking on doors, using the youth volunteers, using the cops and patrols. What other things can you think about to involve the residents in decision-making process in our city?
Well, you know, I think, I know the council meetings are published, and people can listen online, but I'm not sure that the residents, you know, unless they really go online to the website to see what's being discussed that day, or a neighbor says, oh, you know, someone said build this house, you know, build this fence next to me, though, you know, come support me. Uh, we need, somehow, we need to get the people engaged more to come to meetings, and I don't know whether, um, holding meetings, doing a survey to find out if there's a better time to hold meetings. Maybe people don't wanna go out at seven o'clock at night, they're old or they don't wanna drive, or they've made their dinner and their, you know, whatever. Um, I know meetings have been scheduled at different times throughout the decades that I've been a resident of Montecristo, but maybe we need to look at, is there a more convenient place or a more convenient time to hold meetings where more residents can participate or are interested in participating?
Okay, is there anything else Kathy?
Nope, you guys have a really difficult job ahead of you. Um, I'm just, I'm very interested, I'm motivated, engaged, and I would love to serve the community that gave so much back to me and my five children.
Okay, so thank you so much.
They're a great upgrade, great bringing in Montecristo.
So Kathy, do you wanna stay on or do you want us to call you back? So, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go ahead and vote.
Okay, well, Andrea is gonna send me a text to let me know.
Okay, fine, thank you, you have a good evening.
Thank you, and you guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, we're gonna take a vote now, so each one of you, you have your ballot, and please be sure you have the number one on the left-hand side. Councilmember Lawler, you have yours? Okay. Okay, so you're gonna vote, and you're gonna rank each of them, one for the most preferred and six for the least preferred. And since I'm first, I'm going to do the rest.
That's important. You wanna go to Terry?
Go ahead, Roshan.
Thanks.
After I change your votes, make them write, it's an absentee ballot.
The clerk is gonna pause the meeting, so we'll take an official break.
Okay, the meeting will come to order, thank you. Okay, so we have a, we have a clear winner, and the, the top candidate, and I will still call him the candidate, is Daniel Labovey. And so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna have to have a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion? We're gonna pick the, we're gonna have to have three votes to pick the candidate. Would anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will move that we put forward the leading polled candidate's name for consideration by the council for a vote to fill the vacancy.
I second.
Okay, so we have to do this grandicus online?
Yep. Get it started. Patience everyone, patience.
If I had a motion, I had a second.
Could you count the votes everybody got, Mayor? How many, what the...
You mean the tally?
Yeah, how many, how many points did everybody get?
Okay, so Daniel Labovey, we have six points, followed by Chandra Khan with thirteen points, tied with Catherine Brunelbloyd at thirteen, and then we had Michael Frangidakis at sixteen, and Shalina Sexena at seventeen, and Adhirash Rai at nineteen.
Yes.
Oh.
This won't come up?
Uh, it's not coming up.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
See if she can get it to work.
By Councilmember Luthold, second by Councilmember Lawler.
Oh. Can we just do a roll call?
Councilmember Eli?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthold?
Yes.
Yes. Four zero. Okay, so the motion passes, and we have a new council member, Mr. Daniel Labovey. I'm sure you wanna say a few words, one minute.
Just thank you, thank you for your consideration, and it's actually been fun being involved in city government the last two years and hope to make it a few more.
Okay, thank you, congratulations on behalf of the council. This ends our council meeting today. Our next council meeting is May seventh, twenty-eight nineteen, at seven o'clock in the evening. Since there's no further business, let's move to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned.